Surely not only. To start getting like our curriculum. We'll just be, are we still on track to start in August? And when it says start in August, it's probably not fully implemented, but then we have somebody hired and then we have somebody. Getting everything ready, I guess with twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, it's six thirty, we'll go ahead and get started. Opening session prayer will be given by Ricky Dodson, Pledge of Allegiance by James Clouse.
That is great. Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this great nation you give. We thank you for the life you give us every day, Father. Father, we just ask everything we do tonight, we please first and foremost to you, Father. For the best interest of children of Fulton County, Father. I just thank you for all that you do, thank you for the rain you give us today, Father, your refreshing, Father. I just ask you to forgive me when I fail to achieve the same with grace.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Those were emailed out, right packet.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ricky Dodson, second by Wayne Taylor. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number five, any additions or deletions to the proposed agenda? I've got two here that we just left the education committee meeting. And these were one forty-two budget to clear all the funds out for year end for the federal projects. So number ten would be approved fiscal year twenty-three. Final one forty-two federal projects amendment ten to clear all the funds for year end. And the note, the second one is be number eleven under new business. And it'll be approved reclassifying fund balance amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. I'll pass this around for y'all right there. From the account to the unassigned fund balance. And that was an account that was set aside as a reserve for many years ago. And I don't think we ever figured out why it was set aside, but it's moving that out of that reserve back into their fund balance. So number ten and eleven, I'll make a motion to add those two.
Motion.
Motion by Shirley, Alex Reed, sorry. Second by James Clouse, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Number six, approval of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda. Motion by William Abston, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, so we have nothing under executive action, under consent agenda. I'll read through all these and we'll approve the consent agenda all at one time. Number one, letters of retirement from the following, Miki Smith, Jennifer Cho, Edward Walker, Billy Rooker, and Danny England. Number two, letters of resignation from the following, Lisa McCoy, Brenda Lou Reaser, Mackenzie Purdue Gillum, and Wade Eldridge. Number three, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-one, general purpose school revision seven. Number four, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-one, general purpose school revision eight. Number five, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-one, general purpose schools revision nine. Number six, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, ELC revision six. Number seven, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, ARP IDEA revision three. Number eight, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, ARP IDEA preschool revision three. Number nine, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, title one A revision ten. Number ten, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, title two A revision ten. Number eleven, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, consolidated admin revision eleven. Number twelve, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, title one A revision eleven. Number thirteen, fiscal year twenty-three, one forty-two, title two A revision eleven. Number fourteen, Livingston Academy overnight volleyball camp trip, March seventeenth through March nineteenth to Chattanooga. And number fifteen, Livingston Academy overnight trip, overnight volleyball trip, September ninth, twenty twenty-three to September eleventh, twenty twenty-three to Gatlinburg. And all those amendments were sent out and there was notes put at the bottom of those like we talked about last month.
Wouldn't that be twenty-four or twenty-three?
So is this twenty-four?
Sorry, Jarman, just mentioned that, let me look.
Yeah.
Is everybody good changing that to twenty twenty-four, then if there's any updates, we can put it back on them. So number fourteen should read March seventeenth, twenty-four through March nineteenth, twenty-four. And Crystal, you can find out and verify that for us if you don't mind. Any other questions? Entertaining motion to approve all the consent agenda items. Motion by James Clouse, second by Mitch Stonesifer, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. New business items. Number one, consider approval of the following board policies as recommended by TSBA. One point one oh two board members, one point one oh six code of ethics, one point four oh oh school board meetings, one point four oh two. Notification of meetings, one point four oh four appeals to and appearances before the board. Three point two oh two emergency preparedness plan, three point two oh four threat assessment team, three point two oh five security. Four point two oh four summer instructional programs, four point three oh oh extracurricular activities. Six point four oh oh one student surveys, analysis and evaluations. Six point four oh two physical examinations, examinations and immunizations. Four point four oh three library materials, five point one oh six application and employment. Five point one one nine employment of retirees. Five point three oh two sick leave, five point three oh five family medical leave, five point three oh seven physical assault leave. Five point six oh oh staff rights and responsibilities. Six point two oh oh attendance, six point two oh two homeschools, six point three oh oh code of conduct. Six point three oh nine zero tolerance offenses, six point three one four corporal punishment, and six point three one nine alternative education. And those were in your attachments as well, and the email from TSBA that summarized all the changes was emailed out. I'd ask Crystal to print that as well for you all of your packets there. And this is the first reading of those, so if there's any additional questions, we can address those before the second reading. Motion by William Abston.
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number two, consider second reading of approval of policy six point four one on student wellness, and that was sent out last month. Entertaining motion to approve. Motion by James Clouse. Second by Jarman Hicks, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number three, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four consolidated application approval for IDEA, ESEA school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Motion by William Abston, second by James Clouse, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number four, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four, one forty-two federal projects original budget. Motion by Ricky Dodson, second by James Clouse, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number five, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four, one forty-three cafeteria central original budget. Motion by Jarman Hicks, second by James Clouse, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number six, consider approval of fiscal year twenty-four, one fifty-six debt service original budget.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ricky Dodson.
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number seven, consider approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual school board meeting schedule. This was in your packet as well, the dates for July next month all the way through next year. Motion by James Clouse, second.
Little discussion.
Yeah, second by Wayne Taylor, discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to see if we can at all to leave a date when they're scheduled, but I know people have vacations, they have stuff going on at church. So this coming year, if we can at all, I'd like to leave on the dates that's on our schedule. I know sometimes we can't, it seemed like we switched a lot in the last six months.
Well, this meeting here, it was scheduled for tonight, the twentieth. And I just sent a reminder out to remind everybody because Crystal reminded me because it was scheduled because of the final budget, so. But we had changed it a couple of times. Any other discussion?
It's usually conflict of something that's going on in the city or all the reasons we changed it.
We love Valentine's Day. Any other discussion?
Y'all can all bring your bouquets on Valentine's Day.
That's right. Any, no, no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number eight, consider approval of Johnson's control plan service proposal. Attachment number nine, that was a lot of discussion between Crystal and I. That's a yearly plan service that we pay twenty-four thousand dollars a year to Johnson Control. I originally told Crystal not to pay it, but then after Mr. Mosley and I had talked to Johnson Control, they do come up and do yearly preventive maintenance on the systems that they do. They also provide a walkthrough to do preventive maintenance with our maintenance staff. So if we don't do that and something happens and all the system upgrades that the computerized system that ties into the HVAC units, if we don't upgrade that and something goes out, then it's almost like a warranty we pay. So after talking to Mr. Mosley, it's something we need to continue to do. So it's twenty-four thousand a year, I think is right, Crystal?
I think the first year was thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's true. What was it, thirty-two, I'm sorry?
Thirty-two years. The bill that we just got that we talked about, that we wasn't sure we had to pay your line, it was twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
So was that different than this plan proposal? Because that says the first year starts out at thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, because I know you and I talked about twenty-four, Crystal.
Right, and I think he took this and it should have been the revised copy, this is the revised copy he sent us. But then when they billed, they only billed for twenty-four.
So I didn't know if it was, if thirty-two was the first year that we did Johnson Controls anything from there or how that.
Is it thirty, thirty-two each year or is it going to be a change in though?
I thought it's twenty-four every year.
Yeah, it's usually about twenty-four or twenty-eight.
I totally been paying it's twenty-four year.
But this year's is twenty-four.
Yeah.
So, so.
Yeah, the bill they just sent us.
My proposal would be the board approved twenty-four, what we've been paying. And if there's any adjustment to that, I'll talk to Mr. Mosley and see.
Somebody.
Motion by Mitch Stonesifer, second by Wayne Taylor, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number nine, consider approval of the steps repair at Richmond Elementary. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by James Clouse, any discussion? Go ahead.
How much was that going to cost us again, or we just.
It was nine thousand dollars was the cost. Originally, it was going to be sixty-five hundred if air maintenance people did it, if it's going to be nine thousand if that company did it. So we elected to do nine, that way it'd be under warranty and no issues.
Okay.
And that's the steel structure. And this will be paid in July, that way it will hit the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay.
As soon as it's done in July, we'll get those repairs made. Any other discussion? We'll take roll call on that with Crystal.
William Abston?
Yes.
James Clouse?
Yes.
Ricky Dodson?
Yes.
Mike Hayes?
Yes.
Jarman Hicks?
Yes.
Alice Reed?
Yes.
Mitch Stonesifer?
Yes.
Wayne Taylor?
Yes.
Eight, four, zero, pose motion passes.
Number ten, this is the addition, approve fiscal year twenty-three, final one forty-two federal projects amendment to clear all funds for year end. Entertaining motion. Motion by Jarman Hicks, second by James Clouse, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Number eleven, approve reclassifying fund balance amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents from account three seven four five five to unassigned fund balance account thirty-nine oh oh oh. And I'll pass that around for everybody to look at and write the numbers down if you want to. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Ricky Dodson.
Second.
Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes. Special recognition, OCA, Ms. Jennifer Allen.
Hello, everyone, happy, happy summer. Don't blink because it'll be over, if you blink, it'll be, we'll be back at school. The only thing that I have tonight is actually a question. I know the governor recently passed an increase in salary across the board for starting, across the whole state for starting teachers. And I've had several teachers reach out to me and ask me what the Overton County Board's plan is to address that and how that will affect everybody. So I know y'all are crunching that and thinking about it. So we hope that maybe you'll let everybody know how that will affect each step on the pay scale. And let's be mindful of keeping the steps equally separated so that there is that boost for everybody as we come along.
Yeah, so Crystal and I talked about that with Heather, I mean Heather, I apologize, Sherry. And we're going to have those salary scales next meeting, is that right?
Yes.
To approve, and they will be retro back to July.
Awesome, thank you so much, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, motion to adjourn. Motion by Rick Dodson, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Good evening. Let's take company a seat, sir. Yes, sir, my name is Tim Kelly, I moved here about ten years ago from Boston. The reason I moved here is because this is Udo, this country. This is where people live here, this country, and this is where things go well. I went to your graduation of the middle school kids on the nineteenth of May. And I have to thank you, that was excellent, excellent. It was done in Livingston Academy, it was done in the gymnasium, it was well organized, it was well set up. All those kids, mucks on their face. There were awards, there were awards for attendance, there were awards for scholarship. We really started with awards for citizenship. You gave it six awards, and actually those kids had a really good side medal, had a red, white, blue badge. That was beautiful. But I have a question. We started this meeting today with prayer and with Pledge of Allegiance, and it took nineteen seconds with Pledge of Allegiance. There was no flag, and there was no flag of allegiance in that graduation. Now, I come from a place where they forgot what this country is. And we came here because of what this area is. To not have a Pledge of Allegiance for nineteen seconds is upsetting. To not show those seventy kids that stood there that they owe this state and this country. A gratification, ten days before New York oil there, that's trouble in my life. Now, I traveled a lot before I retired. Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, California. You all know what those are like now. They didn't get there with one big swift move, they got there with one little staff that had fallen. And this little staff of the time at that graduation, with no flag, with no Pledge of Allegiance, is part of the staff of the time. And I don't believe it should be repeated. Now, this is your watch, not an old time. Some of you are almost as old as I am, but I met most of you, said a Pledge of Allegiance, you're in school, I look where you are now. You can't let those kids forget that. They can forget it in New York, and I don't give a fat mouth, but you have to make it here. You need to do something about that. Now, what that is, that's your administrative problem, and your administrative responsibility. I for one, would like to see the next time that happens, this graduation or a ceremony like that, that there's a fancy flag, a burning flag, and there's a Pledge of Allegiance. You now know about it, it's your responsibility to do something about it.
Thank you, sir. All right, you good rolling in the work session? Work session number one, coaching supplement schedule? You have an update on that? I think the last time we had talked about it, Mr. Melton was going to go back, do you have that? Was going to go back and look at the athletic director for middle school, my correct countywide athletic director, adding the supplement to that. And get some information on soccer. I think I had talked to him and he had reached out to the soccer, didn't get much reply from some of those other coaches as far as their student versus coach ratio. So at that point, I don't think there was a lot of change other than adding the countywide athletic director supplement, is that correct? Versus what we had talked about, and that was three thousand dollars for countywide. And everything else, I think it stayed pretty much the same as what we had talked about, is that correct?
Was that, was all the other coaches reached out to, or is it just you or?
I think the one we discussed that night, soccer, there was three or four different teams, I think, we had talked about, making sure they were equivalent. Mr. Melton said he had reached out to those and didn't get a lot of replies back about those. So before we come up with this again, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll ask him to double check one more time before we bring it up for the July meeting to approve. Because I know we need to get this into effect.
Well, and this is short notice, twenty thousand, our July meeting. But there's also, there's been a discussion, there's a way that this could be comparable for everyone. If we have an athletic director, let's let our athletic director put this information together. It's waiting on fifteen different people to try to get information back while school is out, it's not easy, it's hard enough when school's going on. But I, I think there is a way that each activity, I don't want to say each sport is.
Club.
Each activity, there's a way that those coaching base gives. I don't want to say the dollar amount to be comparable, but it'd be comparable for time spent involved. And I can reach out to Richard or those there who ever. Because it's become a long run out process waiting for everybody to give information back. And you think, whenever you're talking about money, it may be a little more important than hiring, so.
I think there's a lot of, not turnover, but there's been several that has changed over the past year or several months, it's kind of.
And if you could, Ms. Reynolds, just have her to kind of have that back to us by July if she can. And to Jarman's point, I mean, he can reach out, she can reach out to Jarman and.
Remember, Sarah McCrick, when we talked about the athletic director, we have one that's countywide athletic director. Fulton County has, each school has their own athletic director. Our countywide is less than half of what each school in Fulton County is getting paid. Now, we talked about it in one of our meetings, but we not going to consider raising that up?
Our countywide never had one in the previous, she never, they never loaded.
Maybe compensation?
No, no, and the high school always have had an athletic director. But they never got compensation because they use a portion of their day, like one period of that to work on the athletic stuff that they need to. So it's compensated through that, through that portion.
I still think that's low.
And that's fine, I'm, I'm fine with it anyway. And you can make a note there too, what, I hate to put her on the spot because she's talking about herself, but I mean, we, we can make that decision on what we want to do.
I still think that's low.
So, and just make a note, Dr. Homon, if you would, before we approve in July, we can have an option for three and six. I mean, if we want to approve, if you allowed one for three and one for six.
Thank you.
Have that, fair enough?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Well, just, no, just one of these that has countywide athletic three thousand, and one that says countywide six thousand. And whatever she decides on, everything else will be the same. That way we can decide between. Any other questions on that? Does anybody else have anything? I'll go around here.
Volleyball trip, it was just a mistake, I had three, it should have been a seven, it was July, so that campus will be in July, twenty-three, sorry about that.
Everybody get that volleyball with July instead of March? All right, James, you got anything? William? Mitch? Jarman?
Yes, sir.
Crystal? Dr. Homon?
Scholarship is a choice, and didn't we turn those in a couple of months ago?
Yeah, what do you see there?
Remind, if you have it on the record, please, click in there.
Oh.
Sorry, I thought it was.
Yeah. Yeah, those were good. And the director's evaluation.
Those are all in too now.
So we're good on all those. Yes, sir, we're good. Just real quick, Livingston Academy football field is officially done. So that's, that's over with, done, thank goodness.
And really wet tonight.
I know. I talked to Mr. Mosley last week with the Esser funds, we're in Esser three point oh now, so they've got the units on Allen's replaced. He's put the bid out for the middle school units, he's got the Rackley, Allen's roof, and the middle school roof. So when everything's said and done, he's run a great job with getting all that done. When everything's said and done, I think we'll have, all of our units will be two thousand and nineteen or better. I think so, then all the roofs should be taken care of. Then we'll start working on our next building program, which I emailed everybody that, initial results from Upland Design. Once we get with Connie and she gets us that number, obviously that number was kind of everybody's. Here, if, if money wasn't the issue, dreamless, then we'll have to kind of prioritize from there. So once, you know, Ms. Connie gets us the number that we can kind of look at from the bond company, then we'll kind of sit down and kind of prioritize. I know Allen's, Hillhams, Richmond, I. I know Allen's, Hillhoun, Rickman, I know those classroom additions are probably top priority with the growth and the needs that they have, then we'll kind of go from there. So.
And before we leave, my, I did mean to say, I'm sorry. We had several long-term employees that retired out at the end of this school year. Very good employees over the years, spent a lot of years with us, so just like those employees.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank our county commissioner, Mr. Philip Tally, for being here. I think we saw you once to.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. You make anything else? All right, see you all in July.